Prisms in them.
H I P, does that mean anything?
That's probably high intensity.
It just says thirty-six by forty-eight H I P custom sign.
Is that too much lettering there?
Doesn't say.
So is it possible to find out size of lettering and type of material? Get that information to the council before Tuesday or put this off to November? I'd say put it off till November and get the specs. That make sense?
Well, I know warning lights will, whatever we lay out, they'll print.
Well, and you actually mentioned putting our logo.
Yeah, I didn't talk to him if that had a much shirt of any cost, but.
I can do any imagery.
I think it's a pretty easy form to generate like a graphic, right? I mean, isn't it?
Well, I know they, warning lights just got a new printer that basically takes the film and will print directly on the film. So they can pretty much take any image you can find on the internet and print it.
Oh, okay. But I mean to like give you a little example of what it's gonna look like. Most of us, at least the regular sign companies that do like for a business have all the, they'll just hand me a piece of paper then, you know, the dimensions and how it looks.
Just a graphic of what the sign looks like would be kind of nice to see.
The mockup of it.
Can you check on that?
Did you specify a certain background color? No?
I just basically took, you had given me and said, you know, just the typical black and gray or, you know.
Should be white on blue.
White on blue?
Yeah. Black and light, white, that's a regulatory sign, that's an enforcement sign.
Cause Ramses are black and white.
Right. Typically, it should be, it's an informational type sign.
Ramses are all, see them all over the city right now, they're all black on white.
Are they? Yeah, that's a regulatory sign, put them up on the road. An enforcement sign.
So it should be white letters on.
They, they always turn them sideways.
Uh, blue, blue on white or?
White lettering on a little background.
Oh, they parallel the road instead of, yeah.
Alright, so we'll get more information from both vendors and have it for November?
We can get it.
You can get it by Tuesday?
I'll see, let's see if we can get it by Tuesday, if not, we can just cable it. That's with you. Oh, I got this in the email.
And so are you intending on getting some type of mockup so we know what they look like?
Yep, I want to get a mockup for the signs and going for white lettering on a blue background and how. How tall are the letters? How tall are the letters and what type of material?
In your email, can you ask the same thing? Alright. Hi, I'm Steve Buckholz, permanent part-time. Questions at this point?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rayna.
I'd, I'd like to suggest that we are going to hire Mr. Buckholz on that he assume the responsibilities outlined in the next RCA, which is the independent contractors to clean City Hall and the city offices. He's already responsible for doing that same type of bathroom cleaning at the parks. And it would save us, um, over the existing contract, it would save us thirty-eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. Under the new bid, it would save us thirty-four hundred and thirty-two dollars. And I think that that is something that we can add into his job duties and eliminate the additional charges of having the contracted cleaning service.
Thoughts Cory?
There's a lot of mixed thoughts on that because there could be, when, when it's summertime season, he's not gonna have time to stop and come and mop the floors of the City Hall and vacuum the offices and clean the toilets. He's gonna be spending primarily all his time at the parks. I mean, that's a full-time job in the summertime. If we're looking at winter, then he, he's gonna be doing the snow plowing and picking up there. That's the priority, is the snow plowing. And given that we're not gonna be having him working overtime, if we do get a huge, heavy snowplow winter, that's all he's gonna be doing. So those are the issues that I would have about it.
And right now you would continue to do every other week?
Yeah, I don't, I, and the only thing was, is, which I talked with you about briefly, is there has been some times where we knew that there was several different parties that were gonna be using the City Hall. So we would add an extra service in there just because we knew it was gonna be a mess. And that's only very rarely, and it's generally around the holiday season.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rayna.
I, I would like to give it a try, I mean, if we can build that into his existing schedule, knowing that that's part of his responsibility. If we find after a point in time that it's documented that it's not possible, we can revisit it. But it is an opportunity to save, you know, thirty-four hundred dollars.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I agree, I think it's, it's, you know, when, he's got certain tasks to do, he's gonna be on that. And I don't want, I just hate pulling him, pulling him off to make sure that he's got in the back of his mind, I gotta go do the, clean the city offices, so no, I can't complete this or do this. You know, we, we have it in the budget for this, you know. Question to Cory, when, when do they clean the city offices, during their regular business day or after hours?
Both of the cleaning services that provided a bid did, it was during the office hours. The previous cleaner, it was in the evening, so.
And again, it's just for what, what he can be doing and does, you know, again, I just hate to put that, you know, and take his time away from other stuff.
Mr. Mayor. I agree with Paul, I'd like to just add, the cleaning company, that's what they do, they clean. So that's what their, their profession, and I think we should just have a cleaning company do the cleaning. That's not Steve's.
Say no, no offense to Steve.
No offense to.
But that's not his forte.
That's not his forte.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
How, how much, I, I guess I'd, I'd, you know, cause I know there's been times when we, we may have twenty hours worth of work. What, what sort of, I mean, if that's what Steve's comfortable doing, where this week it might only be twenty hours, late fall or early winter or whatever it is to, I'd rather, I'd rather go that approach not, and not, if, you know, what would, what are the regulations or what rules do we need to work around as far as, how many hours minimum would we have to have Steve working and is there enough for him to do for a minimum of twenty or however, how does that, how was, how does that work?
Well, I think, you know, in the RCA it says here, it's slow, it's slow. We've had the problem in the winter before when it's, there's no snow, we're not plowing, we're not doing things. What are people doing? We would expect the shop to be clean, the equipment to be well-maintained, but at some point, what it says here is if it's slow, Steve will only be called in as needed. So, permanent part-time, it's, the, the cap is on thirty-two hours. But I don't know that there's any limit on it, other than what he's willing to do. If you're saying this week, we'll need you ten hours. I think that's something that Joe needs to work out with Steve, and Joe needs to manage how much staff he needs. But I think that, that rather than say, let's fill Steve's time with something that he may not be as good at. And I think it's important to, to keep this building and the other building clean. And this is the face of the city to everybody who does business with us, so. I think having a professional service is reasonable. If Steve isn't completely busy, then Joe's job is to assign him duties. And if there's less than weeks, it'll be it. There probably will be times that with plowing and stuff, he may end up going over the thirty-two. But I think the scheduled thirty-two is the, the part-time status that we're, we're hiring him at permanent part-time.
And there are no issues if he does hit, go over forty-two or go over thirty-two and gets to forty?
No, if, if you assign him on a regular basis, over forty, then you have to come back and visit and say, you know, is this really a permanent part-time when he's exceeding forty on a regular basis? And Joe would have to come back at that point saying, you know what? We're finding there's a lot more work than we thought, justify it and, and readdress it. But this time Joe's comfortable with, with the part-time status. And if he doesn't need him because of weather, then he would have him work less. And I think in Steve's situation as a retired person, that's okay with him. I'm assuming that you guys have had that discussion with him.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor, that was kind of the purpose too of going to the thirty-two hour less because there are weeks that Steve did not wanna be working every day. He wants to be three times, or three days a week, two days a week. And then in the summertime, of course, work with thirty-two hours, but he was not interested in working that many hours.
Is there any rules out there about if you work thirty-two hours a month, you get, you are eligible for benefits or?
No, um, well, the thing is, is with our, our policy, it generally is, once you are over the thirty-two, then you're, that's where the benefits come into play. And that would be the vacation, sick time, holiday pay. Anything else as far as payroll and social security and all that stuff, that's all fine. We don't have any issues there, but it's your policy.
Yes, it's policy that does it, the same thing in a business, that you set the policy and you say anything under, you know, some companies it's thirty, thirty-two, some it's, you know, anything not scheduled over forty or more. So it's really a policy, it's not a statute.
So ours is, anything over thirty-two, they get benefits?
They qualify.
It's not counting, I think it's anything thirty-two and above, you get prorated benefits.
Yeah, ours is pretty much thirty-two and under, you don't get anything.
Thirty-two and under, okay. You have to be over thirty-two.
You have to be regularly scheduled over thirty-two.
Yeah, it's gotta be in a consistent.
Not the occasional.
I think an occasional forty, if it comes down to it, I don't think that's gonna be questionable because he's being hired as a permanent part-time. But I, you know, I can clarify that with Bob and see what his opinion is on it, but I don't think it's gonna be a big issue.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rayna.
I guess I, again, we're hiring somebody for up to thirty-two hours a week. I, I don't see the difficulty in setting some expectations on vacuuming a room, cleaning the bathrooms. He already cleans the bathrooms at the, at the, the two parks. What needs to be dusted? These rooms are not very difficult rooms to take care of. And I, I think it's an opportunity for us to save that dollar, those dollars and at least give it a try. If, you know, and again, it's, then it's up to, to Joe to, to manage his time and to make sure that, that everything is done. But again, if we can't expect to, that, that we can't set some expectations of an employee for some dusting and vacuuming and cleaning bathrooms, that doesn't say much about us.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Technically, you are not saving that time, you're paying him seventeen dollars an hour. If we don't need him for those hours, he goes away, we're not paying him, so you are not saving that money. So depending on how many hours Kim's Cleaning actually has quoted us in this quote, you could technically be paying more for Steve's service to do it than what they are.
They do the kitchen in here too?
No, Mr. Mayor, the kitchen is the seniors, so they are responsible with managing their own space. But also keep in mind that now that Don is no longer working, Steve will be picking up, he'll be doing the Saturday for Don, every Saturday for Saturday of the month. And then plus, since there's nobody over there managing this recycling center on the weekend, Mondays are generally a disaster. So Steve is spending a lot of time at the recycling center on Mondays, just trying to get that cleaned up as well.
And I, I, I think that with the workload there and his, I think it's a better fit to spend more time, the recycling center can get pretty busy. So we've got opinions, we'll make a motion on, well, it's under the consent agenda right now as far as hiring or not. Keep it there and you wanna address separately next month the, I mean, the, the contract for the cleaning services. Is this a month-to-month or is this a year or?
As far as I understand, it's just kind of a month-to-month type thing.
So I would say that, that we can continue on the consent agenda to hire Steve and then you can address how he's utilized in an additional RCA going forward. If we're on a month-to-month with the cleaning service, we can make changes. Is that reasonable?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
One, one more, it's not much of a concern, but I know we, I know we talked about it when it came up with Lori, is the use of the word permanent, is that gonna be an issue here?
Yeah, I would have you check with Bob on that, and I know that in business that we, we say regular, part-time, regular, full-time because you never want to have somebody come back and said, you said my job was permanent? I know that's come up in, in HR discussions before, but just check with Bob. We might be safer just saying regular, part-time than permanent, part-time. That's a good point.
Just one more thing, that the cleaning company also supplies the cleaning equipment and their cleaning supplies, so that's another extra cost we'd have if we had Steve do the cleaning there.
Mr. Mayor, that also includes purchasing a vacuum cleaners because we've had to purchase many over the years because they're, they don't last. And as rough as the guys are in the office with all the dirt and all the stuff they're bringing in, we go through a lot of vacuum cleaners. So they'll, they'll be supplying that as well.
You know, to do like, you know, Benjamin Franklin Plumbing and make them our booties when they come into the shop. Alright, contract cleaning services. I believe the, Kim's Cleaning is doing St. Francis right now. And so, cat this ninety-eight, seventy-nine per cleaning, so that's twice a month. They would be doing the same amount that we were getting before for a hundred and fifty a time. Any questions on that, it seems to be more reasonable. Obviously, if they're getting the same thing for ninety-eight versus a hundred and eighty-six, I think ninety-eight sounds pretty good. In our budget, we have forty-two hundred. So it's within the budget, how do we get by with forty-two hundred if she was doing a hundred and fifty a time?
I don't know, it worked out, it seemed to me, so.
Her billing at a hundred and forty-nine, twenty-six times a year is three eighty-seven, three.
Oh, twenty-six times, so she, that was, she was doing.
Thirty-eight, seventy-four.
Bi-weekly.
So we're getting one month billing. So the price is going up then, but it's within her budget. Cause she was doing seventy, seventy-five.
Five thousand ninety-six dollars.
For the ninety-eight.
It's not really though.
Oh, she, she billing, what's the bill?
They're billing once a month.
Billing once a month, that's monthly, okay, so yeah, then it's way under, if we're budgeting, yeah, cause that's only.
Using her dollars, the total for the year is thirty-four, thirty-two.
So it'll be cheaper now.
Yeah, cause if, if you take the ninety-eight, seventy-nine times twelve months, correct, you're at eleven?
No.
It'd be ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight, seventy-nine times two times twelve.
Okay, that's what I was asking, bi-weekly.
Yeah, basically.
I thought the same.
Uh, that's not the same because City Hall's weekly and the city offices are.
So City Hall is forty, forty dollars at fifty-two.
That's how they're billing it, okay.
At fifty-two dollars. And City Offices is fifty-two dollars at twenty-six times. Thirty-four, thirty-two.
Do we have to pay sales tax on that? As a city?
Well, actually, yes, because actually we were supposed to be, and what we would do quarterly is when we had to do a sales and use tax report, because we were not gonna charge sales tax for the previous cleaner, then we would have to pay it to the state, so.
So it's going up thirty-eight dollars a, a month.
It's actually going down.
Going down.
Four forty-two.
Was she doing one forty-nine?
Twenty-six times, twenty-six times a, a year. It's thirty-eight, seventy-four. And the new one is thirty-four, thirty-two.
Alright, uh, remove the rest of the dirt. I don't know, I have a lot of success with that dirt situation there, but I think, Randy, maybe you know, the dirt was hauled over here from one of the lots in, in the business park.
It was, when the ponds were dug out, stormwater.
So if that dirt were spread around on our property there, is that, I don't know what these guys are doing with it, they've been taking it. But we, we've got a lot of low area there, the north side of the hockey rink is pretty low. And the area where we would like to put, where we've been considering the recreational rink, is this reasonable dirt to spread around there before we get rid of it all? And you're.
It could be used, yeah.
So we can plant this.
You should have moved the topsoil first and then put it where you want it or?
Cause I think before we get rid of the rest of the dirt, I think we fill in the low areas, at least on the west half of that, that area, because if we're gonna try and put a rink in, I don't have to bring in dirt to try and level it out if we just gave away hundreds of yards.
Why can't it stay where it's at now?
The pleasure rink, right?
No, cause we're talking about the additional rink next to the hockey rink. And it's just not flat enough right now, in my opinion.
You can just flatten it out though.
I just, I wanna do it before we give away the dirt.
Just, just re-grade it, leave it where it's at, but re-grade it to flatten it, flatten it out, maybe leave a rim around it, so it'll hold water for the pond.
I would, I would like to take a look at the north end of the rink there, it's pretty low right now. I'm just saying, before we get rid of the dirt, we should take a look at, at what we need in that lot and then have them level everything else out and plant.
Right, but if we start doing that, then you, then you gotta remove the topsoil. You gotta come up with a grading plan on where you wanna put it, that's gonna cost more. But if you just level it where it's at, to make it so it's flat for a rink, I think you could do that pretty cheap.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rayna.
I, I would ask council to consider asking our engineering company to come out and look at it. Tell them what it is we wanna do there. What would they suggest as a grading plan, the materials, what can we use from existing? And so that when it's done, it's done correctly. We have fourteen thousand dollars left in our, our budget for the engineering. I don't see anything on the horizon for the next two months, two, three months, that would use up that fourteen thousand dollars. And it was, would allow us to have a, a product in the end run that we can then use. Other words, I, I see us having to do it a third time. We're on our second time now because we didn't have clear, we had good specs, but we didn't have clear what, truly what we wanted, and we had to call that contractor back. Now we have a bid or a, a request to, to remove the dirt, level and see by the end of October. But really no specs as to what we're looking to have done there. And I, I think it would be a smart move to have our engineer come out there and say, this is what's needed here. If you wanna put a skating rink out there, this is where, it, it, this is the best place based on about, on about elevations. You know, it, it just, I think is the better way to, to go ahead and, and move forward on it.
Mr. Mayor.
Let us talk.
Just a comment too, I don't know if you wanna consider, but that lot that's not sold needs filled. That's one reason that some people have shied away from that. You need to raise the building up there almost three feet. You don't have to raise the parking lot and everything, but like even on Hagelberg's Lot, the one that just got approved for tiny homes, he had to raise his building up and then he did end up revising his grading plan so that it was a, less of a slope from his building down to the parking lot. But that's one thing to consider if you should have any extra.
This material may, may or may not be good enough for a building pad, I don't know, I haven't really looked at it that closely. But that's why it got piled where it was, cause we didn't figure it would be.
Oh, I see.
And that's John Harwood when he was with Hockenson Anderson, that's why we put it.
Okay, sorry, I didn't know the background.
It's pretty clean.
It was supposed to be, but Joseph and Steve Mattson, they were hauling it out here, it was actually fairly good material, so. I wasn't there when they put it in the pile, I didn't, wasn't watching it, so I, I don't know.
Cause it held water pretty well.
I think it's interesting that it's supposed, supposed to be good, dirt that's not really good for anything, but everybody wants it for free. But, but again, I just think if we're gonna look at doing anything over there, we should look at having it done properly. Other words, I see us back in a year or two and having to look at it again. If we wanna place the rink in a, in a skating surface, let's have them come in with a grading plan. We know our heights, we know it needs to be down, and, and it's done correctly.
Well, and if this dirt is good for a, a building site on that other lot, before we give it away, cause we gave away a lot of it. We need to make our lot more sellable.
And maybe it's sufficient for what we need there, and we don't, all we're doing is moving it.
Harwood was involved in that before, Sushin, Hockenson should be able to advise us on that.
It just, it won't happen in time for.
Planting is here.
For a pond, this, or skating rink this year. Just, just remember that.
Well, that may not, but I'd like to say that maybe we have to level the spot this year for a skating rink and then in the spring do what needs to be done here, so.
Nope, that's good.
Alright, and the next one. So I, I would say that we, at this point, you know, Mary had the suggestion of contacting the engineering firm, getting a plan together. Is the dirt good for here, is the dirt good for our, our last lot in the business park? And come up with a plan before we give away all the dirt.
I'll, we, I'll work on RCA.
We're gonna ask for a cost for that first.
That would be part of it, yes.
That'd be the first thing, I would say. Cost for the engineering and then have him estimate a cost to do the work.
So Mr. Mayor, before you move on, then are we removing this RCA out of there and then Mary's gonna propose a different one? Or what, I don't understand what's going on.
I would, I would suggest we take this one out and replace it with one to come up with a plan before we give away the dirt, so. That would be my recommendation.
That would be my thought.
To add a down under council item?
Yeah.
Yep.
And then the one I have here, and getting council's blessing to have staff research what other communities are doing as far as warming houses and rink, uh, use of rinks. Could be hours, uh, who's staffing, those types of things, and what are, what are the agreements that are in place, the cities have been doing this for a long time, I'm not comfortable having a warming house on staff too, it's open, it's my opinion anyway, that we should have staff there, but we should see what other cities are doing.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Marry.
The only comment I have there is, you know, you, I see us, you know, you know, doing something similar to what we do with the restrooms up here, you know, obviously that, that pavilion isn't staffed, so I'd hate to, you know, have the need for somebody, you know, staff, if you don't have anybody up skating, you have somebody sitting there collecting, you know, some type of fee or something, you know, for nothing.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, I think, you know, other people have had that, and they say, um, we can find out what they're doing to do that, and at least have the discussion on it, 'cause I don't know, it's been a long time since I've been skating.
Yeah, I know Ramsey at Central Park there, you know, and then they're at the elementary school, they have staff there, but they're, they have a lot more faci- facilities there, they have restrooms in there, they have, the one at Central Park has a gas fireplace in there, and, um, but realistically, the staff person doesn't do anything other than just sit there and do their, it's typically a teenager, they sit there and do their homework for the most part.
Probably be contributing to the educational welfare of some enterprising young person. Well, I, I think it's least reasonable to say, here's what they're doing, and, and make a policy accordingly, 'cause I don't know, I, you know, I think that if, if we're talking lights and we're talking about publicizing this, I think we'll get more use than we certainly did last year, you know, that the bathrooms, you know, at least at dark, they lock.
Well, we could do the same thing there, if we have power there.
It seems.
And that was kinda my thought.
I did after our conversation drive down to the other park, and, uh, I'm gonna call the sheriff, but I, there's an awful lot of cars, people hanging out outside cars in the dark in our park down there, I, I personally think we should change our closing time on Twin Lakes Park to sunset, 'cause when I drove in, a lot of people got in cars and drove out, you know, a lot more coming back in, so.
Well, yeah, and, you know, and, and on earth day cleanups, you know, I've found plenty of drug paraphernalia, and I know that the sheriff does have issues with that down there, but again, we, we can claim it closes at eight, but that doesn't stop.
Well, we can close it at sunset, but at least then the sheriff, if they are in the area, can patrol it, and, and it's easier to chase them out, they can say, hey, I'm just out hanging in the park, it's open till ten, but this time here, it's pretty dark by then, and that front parking lot doesn't have the lights.
I think if the sheriff pulls in, they're gonna scatter anyway if there up there, it doesn't matter what time the park closes.
Yeah, I just still think it's, it's a reasonable thing, so, I'll, I'll put that as forward next month.
I ate lunch there one day, and there were some shady characters coming in and out, even at that time.
We've done some drill down there in the morning and chased people out.
Gosh, we never did that when we were kids.
Not, not what they're doing now.
No. We didn't even imagine that when we were kids. All right.
So for your council, is that for the park committee to research and?
Nope, I'm asking city staff.
City staff.
Cory and Lori.
Well, the park committee is for city staff, in my opinion, but.
To clarify, I'm asking it be Cory and Lori. Cory handle and Lori is Cory sees fit. All right, lights for ice skating surfaces.
Well, as, Mr. Mayor, as you just kinda mentioned, I, I, I do agree a hundred percent, if, if we do publicize it and we do put lights, it's gonna get used a lot more than it did last year, I know there's on a couple separate occasions where, um, somebody from A and B brought portable lights out there, and every time they did, it was getting used, um, so we had directed Joe to go out and get some bids for lighting, um, so I worked directly with Joe on that, we got two different bids, um, and obviously you can see there's a huge difference in the bids, and hopefully I can explain why, um, Meyer Electric gave us a bid, um, obviously that's with them doing everything, um, poles, everything, um, I, when I requested a bid from Dependable, Dependable is actually a electrical contractor who does a lot of work with A and B, um, so what I found out after was that he actually contacted A and B, and between A and B and, and Dependable, they kinda figured out, uh, what they felt as a game plan on what A and B could do, or would do, kind of as a, you know, donation to the city, they have pole, poles, so if we went with the Dependable bid, which I obviously would recommend we do because of the cost difference, is the poles would be coming directly from A and B, um, A and B would help, you know, offer the holes for the poles, set the poles, um, and then the electrician would just basically be hooking everything up, so we would have, obviously, a cost, Joe got a cost from, uh, an estimate from Kynexis to run power from the existing pole to a service to the warming house, and that was between fifteen hundred and eighteen hundred dollars, so I just put a, in an RCA, you know, not to exceed amount, um, and then based on Dependable's bid, um, the same thing, it was basically, if you look at the diagram that Meyer actually got from Viking Electric, the only difference between the two is we wouldn't go with eight poles, we'd go with six, so basi- you'd take the two center ones out and move the two that are towards the ends, a, a little bit more towards the center, um, we didn't think, obvi- obviously, we don't need it as bright as a football field, so, thought we could eliminate some of those, um, so again.
How tall would you think the poles would be?
Uh, in talking with him, about twenty-five feet. Twenty to twenty-five feet.
And residual light, would wreck, would light the wreck rink?
Yeah, it, 'cause initially what we talked about too is, and if you are not familiar with the Central Park rink in Ramsey, what they do is, they use their lighting around their, around the boarded rinks to light those, and then they have lighting on the warming house, but all the residual light from the rinks is what they use for lighting for their pleasure rink, um, but what we talked about too is also possibly taking a, you know, being the lights themselves aren't that expensive, taking one additional one and actually mounting it on top of the warming house and turning it towards wherever the pleasure rink would be, so you would have, you know, the, six lights around the rink, and then one possibly, you know, pointing at the pleasure rink.
Is it, is it reasonable on the two that would be on the east side of the boards there, that they could be double mounted and put something?
Yeah, yep.
I wanna avoid what Harvey had over here, where you couldn't see any intersection, 'cause he, he went well beyond the, his border, he, he should've put his, put his lights from the outside by the road facing in, he put them facing out, and it used to be next to possible to see at that intersection, when he had his lights on that corner, but, but again, if we, if we abide by our own ordinances and say the light can't go beyond the, the borders of the property, then we should be fine.
Yeah, you know, and, and again, the other thing, wanted to note is, you know, the intent was to put, put the lights on some type of clock timer, you know, obviously similar, I don't like to, uh, hot tub or sauna, where if you're gonna use it, you have power into the warming house, which has, you know, regular lighting, but then if you're gonna use the rink, you actually gotta go turn the dial for X amount of time for the lights to be on, so, and that way, obviously, if somebody's not there, the lights aren't gonna be on, and being they're all LED lights, they're gonna be much more efficient than any incandescent lighting, but.
Those, if I remember right, that A and B said that those heated air conditions on the side actually are functional?
They are.
So there would be heat.
Yeah.
How electric heat would cost for that? The, uh, telecommunications people don't really care. Uh, the other, the other question was, um, we had talked briefly about moving that warming house closer to the parking area, and, uh, being able to escape to either rink from the warming house, I don't know if that would change the nexus quote or.
Well, again, it's.
They probably have a per foot.
Yeah, we, I think what, yeah, what we need to obviously do is figure out exactly how that other rink would lay out, and where the best optimum spot for the warming house is if it's, isn't where it sits now, um, you know, in talking to Joe a little bit too, you know, we, we had, at one point, got some concrete bids for, for footings around the boards and then a pad for the warming house, and we, Joe and I were thinking, obviously, being it, it's an all concrete building, we really wouldn't necessarily need to have a pad to set it on, we could put, you know, some class five down and, you know, set it on top of that, and the cost there would be a lot eas- cheaper as well.
Yeah, in my opinion, the further south, the furthest south we can get it and still service the rink, so it'd be easier to get to from cars, and people can skate to the rink from there, it's not in the middle of what might be a wreck rink.
Correct.
And, and would save us coming off that pole to, the, the less we have to run with electricity, the better.
And again, that, that all is based on exactly how and where we wanna place that wreck rink, or the other.
And so what are you intending on here, to, to proceed with?
Well, again, I, my, it's, in my opinion, that it, based on your comments as well, I think your agreement, if, if we run power to the warming house and we put lights up this year, the rink will get used considerably more than it has, um, so, again, and the RCA states that, you know, for, you know, what the cost for Kynexis and, and lights based on the bid from Dependable, you know, along with them working with A and B to set those lights, you know, we're roughly talking seven thousand dollars to get that done.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Marry.
I have a question, so, um, to Councilmember Rickert, so it's got light poles installed and supplies, and supplies by others, trenching by others or city, at least two foot deep, so is that include the concrete to hold those poles, or are they just sinking them in the ground?
They'd bury them eight feet, six, eight feet in the ground, so again, A and B would auger a hole and set the poles, you know, so back, backfill, so they'd be sunk six to eight feet.
They're just wood poles, or?
But, yeah, what is the kind of poles?
I believe they're metal poles, and I can get clarification, I know, and again, the guy from, I forget his name off the top of my head, from Dependable called A and B directly, so that communication was all between the two of them, so I can find out some more specifics from A and B though.
A question I have, based on my RCA come, based on the request for moving the dirt, I would think we should wait to install anything until we get an idea from the, our engineering company as to what is the best layout there, um, for both the rink and the skating surface. I hate to see us install something and find out that, that wasn't the best place for it.
And I guess I'm confused as far as, what is an engineer gonna tell us, we've already had it there, we, we know, we've already got that spot leveled for, for that rink, um, it's pushed pretty much as far as we can to the west, so we're, as far as property placement, you know, I don't think we can change it much, we got the ground level, I don't think Shane's really gonna be able to tell us, you know, hey, you'd be better off putting it here, you know, so again, anything that, any, and again, we're October, obviously, with Kynexis and talking to Joe, and we may, I'll have to double check with him tomorrow or Monday, this cost could be a little higher, because Kynexis may be into their winter month rates already.
But if it's shorter distance, it might equal out.
Yeah, so that's something that we gotta look into as well, so the longer we wait, and then again, I don't wanna push this off to the point where we're not gonna do it either, 'cause I see that happening, and again, I don't think anything, and I agree to have Shane come in and say, okay, we have, have this dirt, what's the best way we can use it, I really don't think that's gonna affect where that current rink's at.
And I, and I don't know that without having a response from Hockinson Anderson.
You know, well, you, if you look at the, if you look at the lot alone, the highest point is where that dirt sits now, obviously, the plan is to remove that, the lowest point all goes towards the north, so if anything, he's, you know, if, if he's gonna recommend to use that dirt for that lot, he's gonna go that way, 'cause realistically, that, where that current rink sits, that's one of the higher points other than.
I don't think that, that whatever Shane would recommend would really have much to do with where the current rink is.
And I, that's what I'm saying, so I, that's why I'm saying it doesn't.
I'm really looking at the rest of that, well, how do we utilize the rest of that? Right now, I don't think we make any money on it, but people are haying it, you know, they're mowing it and baling it, and as long as we get somebody to maintain it without costs to the city, it'd be, behoove us to have it as level as possible and, and growing something that people wanna continue to harvest.
And I'm not disagreeing with that point at all, but I'm disagreeing.
I'm agreeing with, what you're saying is, if the, the rink location is sufficient, this shouldn't, this RCA shouldn't impact the rest of what's going on in that lot.
Just the warming house, but?
The, the warming house, I still, it's my personal belief, the warming house should be moved to the south, because it's closer to the parking, it's closer to the power, and you want it out of where you likely would put a recreational rink, rather than having a warming house in the middle of it, 'cause you want people to be able to walk in their boots to the warming house without having to walk across the ice, come down on a, on rubber mat to the skating surfaces, and you can skate right onto the recreational and into the hockey boards, like they do at Hanky, and I don't know what they do at Central, but, but I think the closer we have it to the parking lot, the easier it is to get to, and the less, uh, linear footage we have to do for, for power.
But the key is you don't want it too far away from your entry into your rink either, 'cause then somehow you have to have some type of surface from that.
I, I think that you have to have a rubber mat to a, a skating surface, but I, I envision a skating surface coming very close to the warming house.
Yeah, 'cause realistically, where it's sitting now, it's, it's fairly close to that south end of that rink.
So the next question is, where's other skating park or rink?
Exactly, that's what I was saying.
That one has, it all depends on where.
Yeah, 'cause realistically, if, you know, if, if Joe could go in there today with the grader and level a spot parallel to the existing rink, you know, right in front of the warming house, and you could put water there.
Are you talking, just clarifying, so are you talking to the east of the warming house?
To the northeast, yeah.
Northeast, okay, because just on the other side of that mound, there's about this much difference, when we were marking it out for.
No, I understand that, but if you stay closer to the rink, you know, that's where pretty much everybody parked last year, that's not that far off the same level as what the current rink sits, and obviously, based on having Joe to level it, I would imagine you'd get it fairly close to what the existing rink is.
And I just have one other question, in, in the last discussion we had, um, we talked about a permanent location, but the discussion was changed from permanent, because it wasn't clear if that's where we wanted it permanently, to designate it, so is it smart to expend up to seven thousand dollars, um, to install something that, in a location that may not be. that may not be determined to be the permanent location for that, uh, rink and pleasure surface? Right?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rickert?
Two things. I don't remember us ever changing the word away from permanent, number one. Number two, the only cost that we would lose out on realistically is the cost that, that it would cost Kynexis to run from the pole to the, to the warming house. If at some point down the road, if we ever deemed that we would have to move the lights, there's no reason that these poles and lights couldn't be moved. So that, that cost that we're paying for those, you're not just throwing away.
I, I, Councilmember Rickert, I guess I beg to differ. Um, we're paying for Kynexis to put up power. Um, we're installing, we're paying to have lights installed on these poles.
Which could be moved.
Yeah, I think, to, to your point, we did, we did admit that Kynexis would be, have to be redone.
And that's what I just said.
And in here, the labor to install the lights is nineteen hundred. So the lights can, can be retained, that's fourteen forty.
Well, and you gotta realize though, part of that labor to, for those lights is to run the electrical all the way up to the top of the, top of the poles for the light. All that can be disconnected at the bottom of the poles can be moved. So a lot of that labor's gonna go with if you move the poles.
Yeah.
But again, we're gonna, we're gonna nitpick this and we're gonna stall this and, and it's not gonna get done. It's just, that's what I.
I think, I think reasonably with, with what we've looked at for alternates, right now, I don't know that anybody's come up with a reasonable alternative site for this and whether it's, it's the designated spot or the permanent spot. It's designated for now and I think it will be designated that way likely for years to come.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian.
That's how I, I remember. We didn't say it was permanent because if we, if we decided that down the road, that, that property would, would be used for something else, then it would have to be moved.
They discover oil on city property and we get to build the city hall like Ramsey, then that probably would be the hockey lot.
I actually have plans where I have it fit exactly where it's at in those plans. But it's gonna, and it fits perfectly. But it's gonna be that way for at least five years.
We could make it like Rockefeller Center.
Very optimistic.
Rockefeller Center, we put a big tree there. Anyway, so at this point, I, I think that because of the cooperation of, of A and B welding, which, you know, very generous to give us the house to begin with, and, and apparently willing to continue to work with us, it seems like a good opportunity. I know last month we did talk about, there were some concerns about raiding the, the park fund when not a lot is going back into it, but I think this is a reasonable use of those funds. And if, if it does come to a relocation, much of it, if it's not outdated by that time, could be reused. I guess I still would like to talk with somebody about seeing how far south we can move it, but.
Mr. Mayor?
The warming house, not. And which way we face it so that the door can go down to the ice surface.
My last question was, would this mess with putting in future footings at all? And does that, does that area need to be stabilized at all, knowing that we had the runoff that we did last fall?
That's a separate issue. I think Joe's taking, is addressing the, the water leakage from last year, you're saying? I think Joe's already addressed that or will be addressing that?
As long as this isn't gonna affect that at all.
And my understanding is it shouldn't affect the footings.
Well.
Cause it has to be outside the.
In, in all reality, it's probably, if we don't do footings this year and we do lights this year instead, it's probably gonna be better because now you're allowing that ground to settle even that much longer.
But to, to clarify, right now, the discussion of footings and slab underneath the warming house are off the table. And the preference is to get lights and get it used.
Correct.
Have everybody got enough information if they can make up their mind by Tuesday?
I will get more information as far as the poles and whatnot from A and B for Tuesday.
Yeah, if you can, as soon as you get it, get it to Cory and get it sent home. All right, last thing on the workshop agenda, replacement of the CAT 930 loader. You know, I almost blocked a couple of times. Who wants to say what? I will say I'm really surprised at the attachments being so expensive. I really didn't want a grappling fork, but twenty-one thousand, that's just a lot of money. So if Joe's planning on additional, if he can't find used, he's gonna have to put something in the capital budget for this.
Right, for spending that kind of money on the attachments, yeah.
And maybe he gets lucky and he gets some of the attachments with the used one that he finds, but. The good ones are probably gonna be located in the yard and haven't been out in the, used in construction sites or in forest or, he's got one that's been, he can find a good used one that's been primarily used in the yard for, would be nice, but. So right now I've got an not to exceed seventy-two thousand dollars. I don't know, depending on how far away you go with inspection and driving to pick it up with, if it's an overnight, it probably gets regular administrative salary, but at least it covers most of it. Look at, you know, right now clearing trees off roads after storms, snow removal. This with the, I think really we're looking more like a three yard bucket, but with a bucket, this still could be used for snow removal. It's just without the grappling, it's not as gonna be as adaptable as it could be, but. The idea is we're taking a lot of work off the skid loader, which is showing its age.
And some of the ones that Joe has been showing us have included forks. You know, so, so again, that's helping not, not, not requiring the use of a skid loader for certain things too.
All right, so, so how do we wanna handle this? So Joe looks, if he sees something, do we want any of the council to work with him on that? And Councilmember Brian and one other to continue to, to help him make good choice?
Are there anyone who's the most qualified to be able to make, help Joe make good choices?
I'll, I'll, I'll just stand and say it, I guess.
So why don't we, let's say, Councilmember Bettinger and Brian would, would be consultants for Joe, as letting bounce some things out. Reasonable? All right, anything else on this one? Had enough for tonight?
Yeah.
All right, workshop adjourned.